Christmas still. Same stuff. Just one of the public request.
Oh, it's like quadruple, but yeah.
Yeah.
Last year, I think we had over eight hundred. Yeah. I've got two people working on it now.
You know what I mean? That's supposed to be all, you know, good government and all that stuff. I mean, it is spend a lot of money.
Yeah. Yeah, we spend over a million bucks a year. Yeah, we we have to measure. You gonna do the B? Are you gonna do the B?
In order, we please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible.
Okay, please start with a roll call.
Council President Prince.
Here.
Council Member Perez.
Here.
Uh, Council Member Van.
Here.
Council Member Albertson.
Here.
Council Member Rivera.
Here.
Council Member O'Halloran.
Here.
Council Member McIrvin.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. We're gonna start off tonight with a proclamation. Um, it's Renton River Days. Or no, Renton Rotary Day. I'm already getting slipped there. It's uh, Renton Rotary Days. Uh, Renton Rotary has been around for a long time. I've been a member since, I believe, the early, the early nineties. Um, it's amazing the work that this club does for our community. It's um, it's it's extremely important work and they've been doing it for years. Um, it's an amazing group of people that have been getting together and um, we have people in the club that have perfect attendance, if I'm not mistaken. So, thank you all. I believe we've got a proclamation you're gonna read.
Proclamation. Renton Rotary Day, whereas Rent Rotary International, founded on February twenty-third, nineteen oh five, in Chicago, Illinois, in the USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations, with over one point two million Rotary Club members in over thirty-two thousand clubs in two hundred countries and geographic areas. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary Fund, uh, club projects and sponsors volunteers with community expertise to provide medical supplies, healthcare, clean water, food production, job training, and education to millions in need, particularly in developing countries. And whereas in nineteen eighty-five, Rotary launched Polio Plus and spearheaded efforts with the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and UNICEF, uh, to immunize the children of the world against polio, resulting in polio cases dropping by ninety-nine percent since nineteen eighty-eight, and research that stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas Rotary is the world's largest privately funded source of international scholarships, promoting international understanding through scholarships, exchange programs, and humanitarian grants. And whereas in the last twelve months, Renton Rotary has raised funds through the Rubber Ducky Race at Renton River Days and the annual Caper Auction, as well as awarded twenty-four thousand in uh, dollars in college scholarships to Renton School District seniors, provided twelve thousand dollars worth of warm coats for children, contributed over three thousand dollars to eradicate polio, invested over thirteen thousand dollars in third graders' education and ongoing learning, contributed over nine thousand dollars to Shelter Box, provided a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar cash gift to over twenty-four educators in the Renton School District, uh, to support their classroom, uh, awarded nearly fourteen thousand dollars in nonprofit grants, uh, supplied appliances for senior citizens to help them stay, uh, in their homes, and much more. Now therefore, I, Ramondo Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim February fifth, two thousand twenty-four, to be Renton Rotary Day in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to join me in recognizing our local Rotary Clubs and Rotary International for their more than one hundred years of service to improving the human condition in local communities around the world. Uh, and witness thereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this fifth day of February, two thousand twenty-four. Signed, Ramondo Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Council Member Albertson, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight, accepting the proclamation is um, Al Ralston, who's the president of Renton Rotary. He also is the husband of our own Council Member Ruth Perez, so.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes to uh, spend some time with you this evening. Uh, Mayor Pavoni, Council President Prince, and the members of the Renton City Council. Um, I actually think this is the first time I've appeared before the city council with my wife actually sitting in the dais as well. So, it's always, how do I put it? We're never opposed to one another, but it's interesting that we are opposed to one another right now. Thank you very much. My name for the record is Al Ralston. I am the Renton resident and I, as the mayor said, the the president this year for Renton Rotary. And it really is my great honor to accept this proclamation honoring Renton Rotary uh, on behalf of all of the Rotarians, both present and past, who have worked so hard, uh, to be part of helping move this community forward and the and the people that live in it. Uh, in the audience tonight, or as you can see, are many members uh, of Renton Rotary here, here with me to help accept this honor. Uh, I, I want everyone to know that we by nature are not driven by uh, attention-seeking or striving for individual recognition, but we do feel the call for service to our community and live by the adage, as is part of the resolution, uh, "Service Above Self," and we really take it to heart. Yes, we do get together weekly when we can, and we have luncheon, and there's a camaraderie that happens, but it's all kind of filtered around, uh, our desire as uh, most of us are are uh, residents of the City of Renton, but not all, but all have a connection to the to the uh, the City of Renton. Um, as you know, Renton Rotary works very closely with the city on one of our biggest fundraisers, and the mayor mentioned it early on, and that's our Renton River Days and our Rubber Ducky activity. Um, and not only is it a lot of fun, but it is a lot of work, but we do raise some money that that goes into the programs that were read in as part of the proclamation. Uh, we also have many current and former residents, excuse me, city employees who are here, um, or have been part of Rotary in the past, one of whom is here this evening, and I'm absolutely shocked to see him up next to the dais as well. Former city attorney, Mr. Larry Warren. Good for being here tonight. For all of your work. Actually, both my wife and I were recruited by a city employee uh, into Rotary, and that was Norman McQuiller, who uh, as as you all know, was very active as a city employee and with the neighborhood uh, um, with the neighborhood program and was their coordinator. Uh, I'm gonna add one more point to the, that Renton Rotary has been an active donor to the Family First Community Center. We were at the very beginning of its development, and I want to let everyone know tonight that we delivered a check that were the proceeds from the Raise the Paddle at our at our Caper Auction fundraiser in the fall. We just delivered a check, um, to the tune of forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars to the Family First Community Center to be used for their senior programming, which means that no senior who wants to be part of or take uh, part in the activities of the of the uh, Family First Community Center is going to have to pay any kind of fee for the rest of the year. It is being subsidized by our donation. And uh, I think we all feel really good about our relationship with the Family First Community Center, and uh, they're gonna be a long-term partner in the City of Renton, as uh, are we. Finally, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read a short statement that recently appeared on social programming. It wasn't something that we had solicited, but it popped up. We found it, and uh, it's, I think, a message to all of us I'd like to read with your permission. This is a woman by the name of Leslie. I don't know her, and this is how it was written. Um, "I was a Rotary Exchange my junior year and a Rotary mentor while attending the University of Washington. I wouldn't be who I am today without Rotary. This organization helped open my mind and helped me become the best version of myself as a young sixteen-year-old. So glad Renton Rotary's still here, helping the youth of our future. We all need each other, uh, we all need each other like this." Uh, unquote. Um, again, I would like to say on behalf of the Rotarians here tonight and uh, throughout our community, our heartfelt thanks to the resolution honoring our club. Thank you very, very much. Are we gonna have a little presentation or picture-taking possibly?
We're gonna take a picture right now.
Super. Could I invite the Rotarians?
Absolutely. All the Rotarians, please come up.
Thank you very much.
See you later.
Sorry, I took your seat.
Bye, Aaron.
Forty years, open before you smile or not.
See you later.
This guy escorted.
Thank you, Larry. Larry, see you later.
Okay. Next up on the agenda here, we have a public hearing, um, surplus property sale, and presenting will be Amanda Free.
Mayor, Council President, Council Members, my name is Amanda Free, uh, with the Economic, Community and Economic Development Department. Tonight, I'm presenting a public hearing on a surplus property sale located at fifteen nine oh eight Southeast one hundred and seventy-fifth Street in Renton. Um, it's actually located in the Fairwood area in unincorporated King County. There's the location. Um, the background on this, there was a settlement agreement to forfeiture real property. Uh, this was presented at the Finance Committee and approved at council on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, we posted an RFQ to um, for real estate services, and we selected a real estate agent to sell this property. This is the property. It's a very nice home. Uh, the timeline is, we started getting the house ready for sale in January, the beginning of the year. Um, we listed the house for sale on Thursday, February first. Um, there was multiple showings and open houses over this weekend, this past weekend. Um, we requested offers by noon today, um, and we reviewed those offers this afternoon. Um, and so the best offer tonight, we had five offers on the home. Um, the final and best offer was for a hundred, or eight hundred and five thousand dollars. The home was listed at seven hundred and sixty-five, uh, with no contingencies. So that is the offer that we'd like to present as the best and final for this. Uh, our staff recommendation is um, on behalf of the Police Department and Community and Economic Development, that we recommend that council authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute all documents necessary for the, to close the sale of this property. Um, the next steps is we are having the public hearing if there's any public testimony, and then after the close of the public hearing, the council may approve or deny the property sale. And if the council does approve, then we will move forward with the best and final offer and then um, execute all the necessary documents for the sale. I will entertain any questions or comments on this.
Questions, if you ask me? Yes, Councilmember.
Are there any restrictions on the use of these funds?
It was identified, I might have to phone a friend. It was identified in the um, agreement that was brought to the Finance Committee. I think.
Because it's forfeiture, has to be used only for what the state law allows for forfeiture proceeds to be used, which is essentially drug enforcement. I might be oversimplifying it, but it's for drug enforcement purposes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. All right, thank you very much. And we, we have nobody signed up to testify. Do we have any correspondence?
I received no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
All right. To the council.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council Member Perez, second by Council President Prince, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Next up is the administrative report.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I believe we need a motion to authorize the execution of the sale of the property.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, I move the, uh, we accept a staff recommendation to execute the best and final offer.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Council Member Albertson, that um, allows the staff to accept the best and final offer in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. All right, House cleaning over. Now we're on to administrative report.
All right, good evening. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That was it?
That's it. Okay. Next up is audience comment. We do have four people signed up to speak. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please give your name, um, city that you live in, and what you'll be speaking about. Um, the first up tonight is Eric Tran.
Mayor Pavoni and city council members, my name is Eric Tran, property manager of the Plaza on Bronson Way North. I'm here on the behalf of the hard-working small business owners in the City of Renton, especially in our complex, who are facing unprecedented challenges that threaten the very fabric of our community, particularly the potential increase in minimum wage through Initiative twenty-three oh two. Two weeks ago, I came to ask for bold leadership and help in making public safety and crime prevention a top priority. This not only poses a threat to the well-being of our residents, but also place an unbearable burden on our small businesses. These small business owners who invest their blood, sweat, and tears into their little business find themselves barely getting by, trading every ounce of sweat for the dollars that sustain their livelihoods. I appreciate the council members who accepted my invitation to visit the struggling small businesses in our plaza. During the visit, during the visit, the small businesses shed lights on what is actually happening in our plaza as it relates to public safety and crimes. Though they express greater terror regarding the potential passing of a minimum wage law, one of the highest in the nation, these small businesses fear an inability to compete for entry-level workers while anticipate a substantial increase in costs as wages rise. If this legislation is enacted, they will be forced to shut down, threatening the livelihoods of countless families. It is essential to recognize a significant portion of these small businesses are owned by immigrants who came to this country in the pursuit of the American dream, like Council Member Kim, me, and some of these folks in this room. We embody the spirit of hard work, resilient determination, that has fueled our nation's prosperity. However, the danger of losing this American dream is now a stark reality. The next generation, if handed high wages for entry-level work, will not have incentive to strive for advancement and success. I understand that decisions like these are ultimately up to the voters. However, as leaders of our community, you possess the influence and responsibility to educate our voters. I ask for your bold leadership to champion the cause for small businesses, to be a voice for those who may not have the means to make themselves heard. Small businesses need your voice, your advocacy, your commitment to ensure that they not only survive, but thrive in our city. They are the heartbeat of our community, driving economic growth, providing jobs, and fostering a sense of identity. Your support against Initiative twenty-three oh two is vital to protect the economic backbone of our thriving city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Mark Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, esteemed council members. You all know who I am, but for the record, I am Mark Peterson, resident of Renton for the these twenty years. And I am here once again to comment, to offer my comments on the alley vacation petition that I and my neighbors have initiated in Kennydale. We attended this evening the Transportation Subcommittee and came away from that meeting with the knowledge that the discussion apparently centers on one of two options. Either one hundred percent compensation to the appraised value of the land to be vacated, or a trade of property involving a foot and a half off of the front of each of our properties. So, what we also learned from city staff was that process of, you know, trading one and a half feet off the front, while it sounds like a really good trade, involves a hundred percent of the property owners in this in this action, all forty-one property owners signing off on that. We already know from our experience that a hundred percent of the property owners are not signing off on anything. So, we, we still would like for zero compensation, zero percent compensation and no, no trade. But if the options only come down to either us having to pay or having to get a hundred percent of the property owners to sign on for some trade, knowing that that's not gonna happen, we will pay. We have more control over the situation. We'll, those of us who are paying will pay more than our fair share, just to make sure that this happens. Our preference, again, is please don't make us pay. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, next is Linda Neely.
Hello, I'm Linda Neely, and um, I'm a Renton resident, twenty-four years. I wanna echo what Mr. Peterson said. I was at the Transportation Committee meeting earlier this evening, and um, I just wanna really thank the committee members for their careful consideration of all sides of this issue. I know there's gonna be some far-reaching ramifications in their decision. Um, there are more easements out there that need to be considered in the future, and there's gonna be some social and economic considerations uh, for the city to to think about um, when they consider whether we should um, have to be compensating the city to release the the alley easement that is, it's a dangerous, um, I think it's a, a dangerous and a not a very good uh, location for a real alley to ever take place because it's a steep hill, there's lots of vegetation in that green space, and I'm really concerned for the safety of anyone that would wanna try to drive out of an alley on that super steep hill. There's two steep streets on either side, and a steep street in the middle would be very dangerous and cause traffic accidents. So, I, I don't really care so much about the compensation as uh, that that AB thirty-four seventy moves forward next week. So, I'm just here to please encourage you to move forward with that resolution or ordinance next week. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And uh, next up is Gretchen Wicks.
Mayor Pavoni, council members, thank you again for considering the Kennydale Alley Vacation. I want to just reiterate to you all that this is not an alley. There is not an alley there. It is our backyards. It is where fences are sitting. It is where animals are are walking around. It is where our children are playing. There is not an alley there, and and it, it doesn't need to be there. The Transportation Committee offered a suggestion of possibly a land swap for what's in front, for for some land in front yards instead of the backyards, giving us the backyards in return. However, I know we're not going to get a hundred percent participation in our neighbors. We weren't able to get a hundred percent participation just to get the small amount required to get uh, an assessment of the property's value. So, we as neighbors have all determined that, yeah, we'll all kick in a little extra if that's what it needs to be. So we'd like you to consider the zero, but if you have to go to a hundred percent, we totally understand that. But let me also kick out another option. What about fifty percent without a land swap? Something to think about. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your help.
Thank you. Do we have anybody signed up remotely? Okay, thank you. All right, we're on to the consent agenda. There are eleven items for council consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Okay.
It's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Council Member Albertson, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Council Member Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Council Member Van.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee has one committee report.
Okay, Utilities Committee, committee report. This is regarding an agreement with WSP USA Incorporated for the Lind Avenue Southwest Storm System Improvement Project. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with WSP USA Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars for design services for the Lind Avenue Southwest Storm System Improvement Project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr., um, I move that the council concur with this committee committee report.
Second. Then uh, moved by Councilman Van, second by Councilman Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee report in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Okay, Councilmember Albertson.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Member McIrvin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, two items uh, for the Transportation Committee. First, I just wanted to say we are gonna hold the uh, street vacation um, petition. First, I just wanted to say we are going to hold the street vacation petition. We could not reach an agreement for the staff recommendation of 100% compensation, so we're going to hold that and give staff additional time to explore some other of those creative solutions and communicate with the residents, hope to have that back to resolve that as expeditiously as possible. So we have one report to present tonight on the interlocal agreement with the city of Kent.
Okay.
Transportation Aviation Committee, committee report, interlocal agreement between the city of Renton and city of Kent for the Southwest 43rd Street Preservation Project. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the interlocal agreement with the city of Kent for the Southwest 43rd Street Pavement Preservation Project. The committee further recommends that a resolution regarding this matter be presented for adoption at tonight's meeting. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I move that the council, yeah, I know who you meant. I move that the council concur with the Transportation Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Transportation Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. All right, we are on to legislation. We have one resolution and two ordinances for first reading.
The resolution is regarding the interlocal agreement with the city of Kent. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of Renton and the city of Kent for the Southwest 43rd Street Preservation Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Van, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, we did have two ordinances for first reading, but one is being held in Transportation Committee for that, that's the Peterson Street Vacation.
Correct, thank you.
And so the second ordinance is ordinance number 6131, and it's regarding temporary waiver of city center garage parking fees. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, relating to the temporary waiver of parking fees for the city center parking garage, established by ordinance number 5997 and extended and amended by ordinance numbers 6018, 6039, and 6065 in response to the operational limits on businesses to extend the temporary waiver of parking fees for parking for periods of up to 10 hours within the city's city center parking garage located at 655 South Second Street, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be moved to the second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to new business. Council President Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, February 12, the committee as a whole is canceled because we will be celebrating Lunar New Year at the Lunar New Year reception. No action will be taken, and then at 7:00 PM, the council meeting will happen here in council chambers and by video conference, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, February 12, at 5:00 PM, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room as well as via video conference. There are two items on the agenda. First, renew Grady Junction TOD subarea draft EIS update, and second, emerging issues in CED. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
Nune.
Councilmember Albertson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Committee will be meeting on February, Monday, February 12, at 3:00 PM. One item on the agenda, and it's going to be, sorry about that, in the council conference room and via video conference. One item on the agenda, emerging issues in parks and recreation, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Right, Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, February 12, at 4:00 PM, the Finance Committee will be meeting here in the, excuse me, in the council conference room and via video conference. We have eight items on the agenda. The first is the interlocal agreement with the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority for the regional FD cares pilot project. Second is the interlocal agreements with city of Auburn, Burien, Covington, and Toquilla for electric home monitoring program and related services. Third is a May Creek Trail South King County Capital Project Grant Agreement. Fourth is the agreement amendment with the U.S. Small Business Administration for the local place market. Fifth is contract proposal for strategic marketing services, Renton Community Marketing Campaign. Sixth is the agreement with Greenwich LLC for website design services. Seventh is the ever-present vouchers, and eight, emerging issues in finance. And that is all I have. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman McGurven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to announce the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, February 12, at 2:00 PM in the council conference room and via video conference. There are three items on the agenda. One, lease agreement for Renton Gateway Center LLC. Two, 2024-2025 Orca Business Cards and Passport Products Agreement. And third, full week enclosure of Northeast 44th Street between North 43rd Street and I-405. In committee, we had discussed trying to also add on the compensation final approval for the Peterson Street Vacation at this point. I want to make sure we give staff enough time, so I'm not going to name that on the agenda at this time. If that changes, we will announce that, let folks know.
Okay, thank you. What's the wisdom council?
Move adjourn. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries, we're adjourned.